All council members are present and accounted for. We'll now open the November 2nd, 2016 Norco City Council meeting. Anything to report from closed session?
The city council considered the matters listed on the agenda in closed session excluding the final one, the performance evaluation, city attorney, and have nothing to report.
I would like to report that today Cub Scout PAC 542 occupied these chambers and they voted to continue the tradition of homework. So congratulations. It was a 6-2 vote. And right now, we have the pleasure of having the Pledge of Allegiance done by that same Cub Pack. If council could kind of move back because they're going to come up around the side. So, boys, take it away. They're going to come up around, so we just kind of have to be out of their way.
The presentation of the colors. Fellow guard attention. Fellow guard advance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose liberty and justice for all. Two. Call guard retreat.
Take it away, sir.
I'd like everyone to just bow in a moment of prayer. I would like to first say I thank God that we have Boy Scouts that still can give this allegiance to God in this country for the freedom to all. Father, we just thank you and we just give you glory today. I just pray for the city councilmen and women and chief of police, fire chief, city planners, directors, all to come together to make this city a great city. I ask for a hedge of protection around our leaders. I pray, Father, that this assembly tonight will govern the affairs of this city with integrity. I thank you, Lord, that we have a place that we can still give you honor and pray to you. And, Father, I just pray, Father, for those officers who were slain, we pray for their families, oh God. Lord, you said righteousness will exalt a nation, but sin is a reproach, oh God. Lord, we just pray that righteousness will continue to reign from the city council throughout this nation. We ask you now to protect this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thanks, sir. Boys, why don't you come up here forwards and we'll give you another hand. Come on in. So, this is Wee-Balows. Oh, they're called, what do you call them now? Arrow of Light. There's no more Wee-Balows, right? So, you're called, you're 542. And who's your den leader? You guys are doing such a remarkable job.
Shearons.
Well, she's our den leader, too. So, anyway, we're going to give you a big hand. Thank you, boys. We're very, very proud to have you here, and you did a very good job today at city council. So, now, we're going to move on. Thanks again. We're going to move to Riverside County Sheriff's Department, 21st Annual Canine Trials at Ingles Park. I think I saw Deputy out there with a dog. Deputy Dog.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Deputy Heath Noyes and his partner Hyde. They're going to be telling us a little about an important event that's coming back to Norco this Saturday. It's open to the public, and I'll let him fill you in with the details.
Good evening.
Good evening. We'll get him settled down a little bit, and then we'll get going. Just on. All right. First of all, thank you, guys, for inviting us over again. Once again, my name's Deputy Heath Noyes. I'm out of the Hoopa Valley Station, and I'm currently assigned to the City of Hoopa Valley as their canine. This is my partner, PSD Hyde. He comes from Czechoslovakia. He's 22 months old, and he's, we got him in January, and we've been continuing training. Part of that is, what I'm here to talk about tonight is our 21st Annual Sheriff's Canine Trials. So, we held those, for the first time, we held those last year here in the City of Norco, and it was probably our biggest turnout that we've had in 20 years. So, we're hoping this year's going to be that good of a turnout as well. The city's been very good to us. The facilities are outstanding. I've been all over, been on the team for eight and a half years, and we haven't had a facility as nice as Norco. So, that'll start out. Friday's going to be our narcotics event, and that's not open to the public. That's just for our competitors that come all over. Right now, I think we're listed at about 31 pre-registered teams, and we'll probably pick up another 20 on Friday, and then we'll pick up our last 30 on Saturday, probably for about 60 some odd teams total. So, what that means to you, guys, is that's a full day of competing with that many competitors. So, we'll have, Saturday events is open to the public, so everybody's free to come out and check that out. It's free to the public, and then you get to see not only our team as the Sheriff's Department, but we'll get to see other teams from all over. We do have, I do have Vegas teams coming, some Tulare County coming. We haven't got confirmation on the Marines yet, but they should be coming down as well. They come every year. But, he does, he does. We get a bond working as long as we do together and spending as many hours as we do together. And then, on Saturday night, you, guys, are all welcome, and hopefully, you, guys, will attend our banquet this year. We'll have a table set aside for you, guys. Come in. You're going to see most of us will be up and walking around that are going to be on the team. We'll be dealing with raffle prizes, things like that, so please introduce yourself to those, guys, and get to converse with them. Some of them are around here, but we have, guys, all the way out to Blythe that we cover. So, they'll be here, and we're looking forward to that. So, I just want to take this time to thank you as a member of the canine team and representative of them tonight. Thank you, guys, very much for the support that you, guys, have given us, but mainly for the example that you, guys, have set with that support. Right now's a hard time for us in law enforcement, as everybody knows, and you, guys, have been, really stand true to that. And the support and the example that you, guys, set is just outstanding for us. So, with that, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for protecting us, too. Who's our deputy on duty tonight?
That's Deputy Arturo Mendez.
So, Deputy Mendez, thank you for protecting us tonight. We know you're there. So, moving on to city council business, communications, reports on regional boards and commissions. Berwin, you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'll start off with RTA, the bus association. Two years ago, when they were retiring some of their dial-a-ride buses, I talked to Brian Petrie and told him we could probably get one if we applied for it. So, we applied, and we took delivery of that two weeks ago, wasn't it? So, we have another shuttle bus here for the city. And we just approved the purchase of 30 more, 30 new dial-a-ride buses, 12 passengers. 24 of the old buses will be replaced, and we're adding six new ones to the area because it's getting really busy, which is good. Two Saturdays ago, I attended the bus rodeo at Hemet at their terminal down there, and what that is, is the professional bus drivers all go through an obstacle course with 10 of the toughest obstacles that there is. And the winner of that, I guess he's won it several years. He'll be going back to Reno this year to represent RTA at the bus rodeo up there. But then, they have what they say is a simpler obstacle course with seven obstacles in it for the commissioners. So, there was 13 commissioners. I wound up coming in fourth. I was the only one of one obstacle that was perfect, and that's where they had two rows of tennis balls that you had to drive down through with your back wheels without touching the ball. I was the only one of the bunts that didn't touch the tennis balls. I did real good on everything until I got to the barrels that were lined up. Lady said, "You've got to be doing 25 miles an hour." The bus is eight and a half feet wide. You start out, the barrels are nine feet, two inches apart, and by the time you get down to the last barrel, the fifth barrel on each side, they're like one inch clearance on each side, and if you move your hand, you're going to knock over about four of them. And I said, "25 miles an hour." There's a cop sitting down there at the end in the way with a radar gun. She said, "He's going to make sure you go 25." So, when I speeded up to 25, my barrels, some of them looked like bowling balls out there. But I didn't hit the cop. I stopped, I stopped one inch from the deadline there, and everybody else was stopping about three feet. I stopped closer than anybody, but the cop already had his car started and was ready to pull out and everything. But it was fun. I hope we'll go back and do it next year. Our CTC, they had representatives come over to Norco in the last two weeks. They came to the Horseman's Group, and they came to this town hall meeting and gave reports about the 91 progress and the 15 freeway toll lanes that they're building now in the middle and how they do that. They'll start on that at the end of 2017, or they'll, they started on it now on the other side of the 91 freeway, closing up that median on the 15 for the toll roads. But on this side, they'll be starting pretty quick. And I think they've already started under the bridge over here, putting the environmental deal in there, the bat condos. And we approved a digital radio system for the Freeway Service Patrol for better communications with the Highway Patrol, CHP. What the Freeway Service Patrol does is they work 80 something miles of our freeway in the county. They're the small tow trucks you see, and they go to you immediately when you're broke down, and they hook on to you and take you to the nearest off route, get you off the freeway, and unhook you, and you're on your own getting your vehicle repaired. But they do a great job of keeping the freeway clear of broken-down vehicles. With Vector, and this is kind of an interesting report. Last year in the state, there was 783 cases of human west Nile. This year, it's down to 347. 2015 Riverside County was the leading county in the state with west Nile cases in humans. And I forget what the count on that was, but it was way up there. This year, there's only been one human case in the Northwest District. That includes Norco, Eastvale, Hoopa, Corona, all the way down to Canyon Lake, Marietta and down in there. There's only been one human case of west Nile, and that was a lady here in Norco, and I think she's doing okay now. But it's been, been an amazing year with the weather we've had and how the reduction in west Nile cases has gone down in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The past couple of weeks have been kind of busy. Went to the town hall meeting, and I'd like to thank the Lake Norconian Club Foundation for hosting that. There were a lot of good presentations. Also had the Unload meeting a week ago Monday as well. We reviewed the Healthy Kids Survey with the school district, and they provided information to us on students from fifth grade up through seniors and what their perceptions are on drug use, and then also what they've had access to and what they have or have not used. So, that was some pretty eye-opening information, to say the least. Being the chair of the Unload Committee, I would like to ask if anybody is interested in joining that committee and helping us with outreach. We would gladly accept new members. You can just let me know, and we'll get you hooked up with the group. But we're looking to outreach to the community, not just students and children in our community about the dangers of drug use and what can happen, but we'd also like adults to join the organization to help us with the outreach so that we can be at more community events and let people know what's going on. And I think, well, I know that there is a plethora of resources that are presented at Unload, and we have a lot of really good resources here in our community, and we just need to get the word out to people about all the resources so that if you're a parent struggling with a child that maybe has a problem with drug abuse, where do you go? What can you do? What are the resources? And that's kind of the function of this, one of the main functions of this group. So, I would encourage anybody that has an interest in helping out with that to please let us know. I was able to sit in on a little bit of the LMD for meeting the other day, which was interesting for me. It was my first LMD meeting to go to, and so still in the learning process on that. Attended my first Norco Citizens Patrol banquet as well this last week. What an amazing group of people, and the amount of service that they give to this community is just incredible, and it's a very, very special group of people for all of us in the service that they provide. And then, lastly, made a quick stop at the Family Fun Festival for Red Ribbon Week that unfortunately kind of got rained out a little bit, and a lot of people packed up and went home. But they had a decent turnout considering the weather anyways. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ted?
We, earlier this, yeah, earlier this week, we had the Fireworks Ad Hoc Committee, working with sheriffs and fire personnel, trying to figure out how to handle some of our upcoming New Year's Eve and Fourth of July. Been very productive and look forward to seeing the report from the Sheriff's Department and Cal Fire, what we're going to put together for the upcoming holiday season. Attended my last EDAC meeting officially, as of this was our last meeting for the year. Still looking for some applicants for the EDAC positions, so if you're interested and qualified. EDAC is going into a new direction as far as with the restructuring program. I think it's going to help out the participation and the feedback from the business people on that. Also, attended the Southern California Association of Governments Report on Earthquake Preparedness Initiative, and that was presented by Dr. Lucy Jones, who used to be part of the Cal Tech earthquake thing. And some of the things they talked about was understanding the risk of earthquakes, first of all, as far as cities go, and then addressing your city's risk. And they're going to further this out by inviting another city public works director, Chad, and planning director, Steve, and city managers to come up and work with each individual city through SCAG as part of this earthquake preparedness. We've done a good job, Cal Fire has, in how do we respond, but basically, after our initial response, we're going to be out there on our own from anywhere from three days to three weeks to three months. And as cities and city leaders, we have to come up and make sure that we can survive because your cell towers, your cell towers got four hours of battery, and you're not going to be able to Pokemon or do anything else after that, after that battery dies. So, communications will be a key. Also had the Ad Hoc Committee meeting on accessory buildings that councilmen and I are on, that we're really working and getting a lot of good feedback from people that show up. We appreciate that. Again, it's a long, tedious process, and I think even our planning director and city manager are figuring out that this is a very complex situation we're trying to fix. And we do appreciate citizens and the citizens' input on it. Again, the town hall meeting. Again, I want to thank LNCF for putting that on. And that's about it, Mayor. Thank you. Oh, before I forget, this Monday, we're having our veterans' meeting, and that'll be our final one to wrap up for our Veterans Memorial Service on November 11th. That's next Friday at 11:00 a.m. Thank you. At Ingles Park Memorial.
Greg?
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening. I also attended the LMD meeting the other week, the Ad Hoc Committee meeting on accessory buildings this week, and the Citizens on Patrol banquet this Sunday. We also had a meeting with Waste Management, myself, Waste Management, and city staff, discussions on rebalancing, rescheduling, commercial and commercial manure bin schedules. Waste Management still has a lot of homework to do, so we task them to provide a lot more information to us, and then we'll probably meet with them again, and then the recommendation is that it comes back to the entire council for discussion on what they're going to propose. So, nothing earth-shattering out of that meeting. Tomorrow night, I have the Chino de Salter Authority Board meeting, and I'll be able to give that report next week. And then, this last week, on the 27th, we had the Riqua Board meeting. I was not able to attend, so possibly, under staff communications, our public works director could give us a rundown if possible. But I won't hold your feet to the fire because I know you couldn't make it either. That's all I have. Thank you.
I went to pretty much all those meetings. So, I will touch on, Bill Wolkman and I went before the State Historic Preservation Commission last week, and we made some good contacts there, and I'm quite honestly very confident that they will place the naval base on the National Register of Historic Places unless, unless the FOIA requests that indicate behind-the-scenes letters and stuff going back and forth, but just based on the information that we presented them and talked to them about, it was a very favorable. Part of our frustration has just been we can't get in front of people. And then, of course, you saw the letter from the ACHP, and Bill Wolkman was quite upset. That's from Wayne Donaldson. The ACHP is the federal wing, and I laughed out loud. The idea that no new evidence was submitted is just crazy. And so, I don't know what's going to happen on that end. I mean, it's just silly. It was a silly letter he sent to us, and I'm not even sure he sent it. So, it's already gone out to every major preservation group, and they're all having a big laugh, too, because they're becoming more and more familiar with what we have here. The commission, though, what'll happen is now he will submit probably in the next week, maybe two weeks, and then the goal is for us to appear before that commission at Pasadena, in Pasadena, in, I think, June. And again, they were very, very open, and what he needs to do is get three votes, and we'll see what happens there. The irony of all this is that even if it gets put on the National Register or just the State Register, it really doesn't mean anything to the Navy at all because we work very well with them. We're also looking forward to, what's the date we're going to meet with the captain, the new captain?
November?
November 15th, and that's going to, we're going to take the captain. You actually have two captains. You have the captain from Seal Beach, because the name of the base is actually Naval Weapons, Naval Warfare Center, Seal Beach Detachment, Norco. That's actually the name of the base. The tenant, the renter, is Naval Warfare Center, Corona. We're still working on changing the Corona, but we haven't had much luck yet. So, we have Captain Murray there, and we have the new captain that's coming aboard. He's already aboard, actually. We went to, in fact, Ted and I went to the ceremony. And that's all I have to report, so we will move on now to the consent calendar. Oh, yeah.
I got one more I forgot to mention there. Last Thursday night, they had graduation out at, from the Sheriff's Academy out in the Grove Church out in Woodcrest, and I was fortunate enough to get invited by Captain Horton, our captain over in Hoopa Valley, and he picked me up, and we went out there, and they had 22 new recruits graduated from the academies for the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and then there was about six or eight police officers graduated from different cities in the area. But it's a pretty nice event, and I appreciate getting to go. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you. So, moving on to two city council consent items. Does anybody wish to pull something at this time?
D.
D.
C.
E. Berwin, anything? Do we have a motion to approve A and B?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Skornmeyer?
Yes.
Hannah?
Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ted, your C?
Yeah, the reason I pulled this, I see we changed from originally the other contractor, Chad, on that, and we go into another, and I guess by, because of, and I don't know why, that's fine. So, we're, we did from Superior now to the new company. But again, back to my original thing, when we did this initially back in July, we're going to make sure we monitor this and not exceed our budget amount, correct?
Correct. And that's one of the reasons we, I elected to let the existing contractor go because of performance and other issues, which I don't need to get into, but they, I felt it was better for the city and staff that we move on to the next bidder, which we are very familiar with, worked in the past. They're just a little higher in their, in their per-item cost, but the quality of work we know is very good. So, we have a much higher expectation of performance with Orange County striping versus the previous contractor.
Okay.
And we will always watch the budget.
And we're going to monitor those as they come through to make sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's it. I don't have any further.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Skornmeyer?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Greg, D?
Thank you, Mayor.
Chad, a couple of questions first. This is on selling our carryover storage.
Correct.
The buyer, and we only had one bidder, Fontana Water.
Correct.
Is the buyer an 85/15 party?
Yes.
Does 85/15, is that have to do with anything with bid amounts?
No.
Or what is an 85/15 buyer?
85/15 is a requirement as far as the replenishment cost. So, if you're an overproducer, it's current arrangement, if you're a producer in the basin, basically, that if you're an overproducer, if you have a certain amount of right and you overproduce, you have to, you have to basically pay 85% of the replenishment cost. And actually, there's another pool of, basically, the pool of other parties help pay for that other 15. So, that's all it really means as far as if you're a member agency, you are qualified for the 85, 85/15 is basically, it's a subsidy that they get.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with what they're paying us. They're paying us the full price that they offered, and there's no issue with that. That's just more of a identifying them if they're an overproducer, which Fontana Water Company is. They have actually no water rights. They always buy the rights that they produce, so, but they classify it the 85/15 rule.
Okay. Well, you kind of touched on where I'm going to go next on this, that in, this water coming out of this Chino Basin, Fontana Water's not anticipating pumping out of that water, that basin, are they? Or do they, do they trade off other shares? I mean, since we can't, we can't take that water, are they going to take the water or are they going to trade off? How do they get their hands on the 2,000 acre feet?
Well, it's just a paper exchange in that they physically, we currently have a banked amount within the Chino Basin Water Master, and they basically transfer that 2,000 acre feet to their account. And now, it's a, it's available to them to use for their overproduction. So, they basically say, "Okay, I produced 8,000 acre feet. I have 2,000. Please use that to reduce my obligation." So, it's just a paper exchange, basically, what it is. Where they pump it from, how they get, how they actually physically, physically do that, that's up to them operationally.
Okay.
But this is just a paper exchange.
So, my concern is in only having the one bid come back to us, and it seems that their rationale is the price that they offered us at, let's say, 504.90 or 505 an acre foot, is what we were able to pay another agency or city for a water
So, the replenishment cost is six, I forgot the number here, it's six something. And they say, well, they take 85% of that saying that's what they're willing to pay. The reality is it's an open market. They could have, but we know, and nobody's going to pay us more than the replenishment cost. So, we already know that market is somewhere under 600 because otherwise you could just pay the replenishment cost from Watermaster and it doesn't cost anything more than that. And Watermaster then is obligated to go find that water for you. So, we know that number is somewhere below 600. Their rationale, which again, we can't actually argue with it, it's just, they just explained how they came up with their number. They didn't have to explain it all, they just said, here's the, what we're willing to pay. And unfortunately, we didn't get, several reasons I believe we didn't get any bidders. One is because we did it early in the year, fiscal year, and agencies aren't really aware yet whether or not they think they're going to overproduce or not and whether they want to come for that, that water that's available from others that aren't going to use it. Even with that, if you had competition, I have not seen anybody pay more than the replenishment rate. So, you're, you're talking about a few dollars between likely bids that would have likely come in because again, everybody knows the default is I don't have to buy somebody else's water, I can always go to Watermaster for a loan to pay their price, which is, I think it's 625.
615.
615.
So, replenishment water is 615, 615 an acre foot.
Right.
Okay. Fontana Water offers us 505.
Right.
An acre foot. So, what I'm looking at is that $220,000, okay, is their number below what we could get?
Well...
I mean, on the, in a perfect world, okay?
If somebody was willing to give us the same price as, as Watermaster's price.
Right.
But the reality is, is, that's certainly possible. One of the main reasons we chose to do this now is, one is we need the, we need the funds in a water fund because we're already getting close to exceed or using our funds. So, this influx of revenue, it was planned as part of the budget and it is really needed now.
Correct. And I understand and appreciate that we need the money, okay? What, what concerns me is Fontana Water may know we need the money, but at the same time, what I'm seeing with my dealings with Fontana Water, that I think it's a low price. And they're desperate for water. They are the epicenter today of construction. They sell their, their water for almost 350 a unit. So, the numbers I ran, they can take that 2,000 acre feet and sell it for a little over $3 million. That, what I, I'm going to, kind of on your expertise, since it's the only bidder, would it be permissible to go back and try to negotiate? I think we're $220,000 apart and try to meet in the middle on that difference? Is there opportunity to go back and negotiate for Fontana Water for a better offer?
We're certainly not precluded to do that. I mean, it's, we chose an open bid process and just to get that information out, we submitted directly to parties that we felt were, have been previously purchasing water and would be interested in purchasing water. So, we had a process there, it's just most of the parties declined to bid at this time. It does not mean we could not go back and say, we want $100,000 more, $200,000 more as part of the deal and they may take it. We don't know. We did not engage in that type of discussion. I basically took the offer from myself, I felt it was reasonable based off of what the current rate is for replenishment water. Could we get more? Certainly possible. Are we precluded from asking for a little bit more? No, we can absolutely do that. If that's the direction of the council, we can do that and bring it back to the next agenda item and see if they're amenable to that suggested, you know, additional price.
That would be my recommendation, that, that our Public Works Director goes back to Fontana Water and try to negotiate a better price than what's being offered today.
But there's any discussion by council?
If I may, yes, absolutely. The, the idea of selling this surplus water is something we've been talking about for a number of years now. And from my understanding is that the going market rate over those number of years, it has been around $500. So, is, there is a possibility that this is what the market rate is. For those who are willing to buy this water, perhaps Chad, another thing we could consider doing is actually going to the Watermaster to perhaps, if, I don't know, if it's public information, to get information pertaining to those that have transacted on this over the last couple of years to see what the, that was paid for that.
I'm sure the information is probably available if you requested it, but you're correct in regards to the going price for the last few years and I guess the experience as far as JCSD 2, as the, I'm a board member on, they've commonly paid about 500, 525, you know, for water from different entities that they purchased water from. So, they've never gotten close to the replenishment rate, but that's about the going rate. But again, I'm happy to go back and, and make that request and that the direction of council is to negotiate a potential better price and see where they, what they say.
And I'm not asking, I get it, we're not going to get 615. I think we can do better than 505. Or at least have the opportunity to go back and ask since they were the only bidder.
Right.
Any of the comments from council or staff?
Councilmember Skunmeyer, Hannah Hoffman, Mayor Pro Tim Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Robin, E.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chad, I just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff for going through item by item on this list of parts. Briefly scanned the list and some of the savings, you're getting us, you know, a couple cents, some of them is $30, some of them it's upwards of $100, $100 per part that you're saving us by switching through to the different vendors on different items. So, I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate the work that staff did on going through this list item by item and add a pretty substantial savings to the city. So, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilmembers Skunmeyer, Hannah Hoffman, Mayor Pro Tim Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to public comments, it's the time when persons in the audience wishing to address city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Do we have anybody?
Mayor, I don't have any cards.
Okay. Closing public hearing. Moving on to 5A ordinance number 1008, first reading.
Okay, city council, this item is regarding a request from council to adopt a scavenging ordinance and that's in addition to our current municipal code for trash. The goal behind this was to provide direction and specifics to both code enforcement and Sheriff's Department on the rules that would apply and define scavenging and the prohibited, prohibitions for doing so. Basically, you know, to highlight it is in, it's in your staff report, we give the definitions, we add a couple of definitions for scavenging, we talk about, you know, what that entails specifically and how enforcement also would be done, the potential for penalties, which is consistent with our existing municipal code, which is pretty much, the first citation would be $100 and then if you are cited for the same offense, again, within three years, it's $250. So, the idea is when it comes, at least we have now a, this is approved, we would have the ability to at least attempt to enforce when things are reported regarding scavenging from the public. Again, most of that would likely be done when available by our code enforcement and would be supplemented with, potentially with the Sheriff's Department if they're available. But at least that it gives direction for both the code enforcement and the Sheriff's of documenting why they're in violation and how, and why the individual or individuals are being cited at the time. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council have any questions for staff?
Yeah, Chad, in our existing ordinance under 6.42.20, it already has that no person will begin, well, no person can remove, take recyclables out of that. And so, all we're doing is strengthening that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is this going to be done on an administrative site procedure?
I believe so, yes.
Rather than, okay, because it's just to streamline the situation. Because unfortunately, the deputies don't have, if you're in, so we're going to allow code enforcement?
Yes.
And who else besides the deputies?
Just the, just the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. All right. And then, you know, and Eric, you've already looked this over and you're good with this?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Greg?
Chad, I want to thank you, thank you that a lot of residents have asked for this. So, basically, we have another tool in our toolbox to help when this problem occurs. And I did want to tell you with all your staff reports that this is one of the most well researched and well-written reports that you have presented to date.
I have to concur.
Well, I'd like to say I worked real hard on it, but I can't take credit for that for obvious reasons.
Kelly Newton is actually the one who took this project and researched it and presented the staff report to, to staff. So, I do want to commend her for the work that was done here. And I too agree that this is one of the most well-researched reports and well-written. So, but I do want to make sure that she is recognized for the work she did.
Motion to approve? Do we have any cards?
Thank you, no cards on this item.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, California, to amend chapter 6.42 of the Norco Municipal Code, Municipal Refuse Collection Service, to include a definition of scavenging and to establish two new chapter section to prohibit and enforce scavenging from and tampering with public containers.
And I apologize, the motion was made by?
Me.
Mayor Bash and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Newton, Councilmember Skunmeyer, Councilmember Hannah, Councilmember Hoffman, Mayor Pro Tim Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to B, ordinance number 1009, first reading, a request to amend chapter 6.24, abandoned vehicles of the Norco Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a proposed code change to beef up our abandoned vehicle code regulations. Norco is currently part of an abandoned vehicle abatement service authority that's run through Riverside County. And as such, we're required to comply with certain procedures that will allow us to be reimbursed for the costs of removing abandoned vehicles, provided we follow those procedures that are established. Management intern that we have on loan from Arco, Arturo Garcia, who's here also, did the research and wrote the report and basically found out that while we have the mechanisms to do the enforcement, we didn't have the definitions that would allow staff and citizens and decision makers to be able to effectively identify abandoned vehicles for what they are and be able to submit them to the city for possible removal should they prove to meet all of the qualifications. And so, what this code amendment before you tonight will do, if approved, is add some definitions for abandoned vehicle, dismantled vehicle, inoperative vehicle, public nuisance vehicle, and really, and wrecked vehicle. And these really are just tools that will help code enforcement to enforce our regulations for removal of abandoned vehicles and will help citizens to recognize that vehicles truly do fall into this category and can be reported to the city. So, with that, I will conclude my presentation and I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve?
In fact, I just may add a couple of things here. This is not just a code enforcement issue, it is also a public education issue. And one of the things that our management intern has done with respect to this subject is that we have also developed policies and procedures that will ensure that this program is administered on a consistent basis and that we have the necessary forms and literature that we need in order to make sure that the public is educated on this, on this program and the benefits of the program and how to take advantage of the program to make sure that the, these abandoned vehicles are basically taking care of from city residents and city streets.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Ted?
This is pretty much concurrent, the same way as 22669, A and B work, is that true? Eric, when you've made with us?
Well, I think honestly, this might be a little bit different related to code enforcement cases. We do have a number of vehicle code tools that we use for abandoned vehicles regarding the 72-hour law and we market. I think this applies to a little bit different, but what we do is, is we meet monthly through our Norco Quality of Life group and we tackle challenges just like this and we determine what tools best to challenge them. And we'll work with code enforcement and vice versa to make sure that this is applied appropriately.
Okay, so this gives you another tool in the toy box?
I think it's more for the city.
Okay.
It benefits the city more.
All right, and back to you, Steve. We're still, we're still following in the abandoned vehicle trust fund pursuant under 22710?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, because there's still good money in there that we can recoup the losses and the work time and that, and it's still under VICRs, right? Okay. Thank you.
Greg?
Steve? With definitions number four, like owner of land, is, this is going to help us to, like the abandoned vehicles in the front yards on code enforcement cases?
Yeah, what typically happens when a potential abandoned vehicle's been identified, we send out a notice of, once, once code enforcement's gone to the site and it does, because each one is case by case.
Right.
And once they've decided that, yes, this looks like an abandoned vehicle, they have to make every attempt to contact the owner. And so, what they do is they, if a VIN number's there, use that. And they also send a notice to the property owner where it's located so that every attempt to contact the owner to let them know that the city is going to move forward on removing that vehicle. So, if they want to appeal, they need to contact the city.
Same compliments to you and Arturo on developing this ordinance. Good job.
Yeah, Ted?
Thank you.
Steve, and when I used to work with code enforcement on these abandoned vehicles in the county, they would have a rule that essentially, if a person could put a battery in a car and it start, then it was not considered abandoned. But if it, if they couldn't start it, then it was considered an abandoned vehicle or a dismantled vehicle. Is that the same?
Again, it's a case by case. If you look at the definitions, the ability to start the car isn't enough. It has to be an operable vehicle. So, you have to be able to drive it on the street and move it. So, just starting is...
Yeah, I know, okay. All right, thank you.
Robin?
Thank you, Steve and Arturo. I did have a question for Andy because he talked about the education part of the program and this may be for you, Steve, too. When we talk about the education and the program, how exactly do you guys think you're going to roll that out or let the citizens know or the residents know about that particular part of the program?
Yes, with the help of us, we have developed actually a flyer that will go out in the water bills that, and part of what we're going to do is also include this information on through city website, city Facebook, as well as our weekly highlights. But, but this flyer will be going out to residents, notifying them about this program and the benefits of it and how to take advantage of it to... and the benefits of it and how to take advantage of it to remove abandoned vehicles on their property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Steve, I want to thank you and Arturo for rewriting this ordinance and everything. We have a, they're over in Old Town where they seem to drop off a bunch of vehicles. I've had Javier the last year or so, I know he's picked up three, picked up one car off of that same street and two motor homes off of an empty business over there. The one motor home, they left the tow strap on it, so that made it handy to get rid of. But they, they're really an eyesore. They usually got the windows beat out of them and everything, but appreciate this and hopefully, hopefully that noticing the water bill will open people's eyes about getting rid of them like that. Thank you.
For me, Arturo, you, for those of you that don't know, he's a management intern with WARCOG and an executive fellow, which was pretty tough to get. And you did a great job on this, so thank you very much. And next time I see Rick Bishop, I'll tell him you're doing a great job. Do we have any cards?
No cards.
Okay, open and close public hearing. Second?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, California, amending Chapter 6.24, Section 6.24.010 of the Norco Municipal Code, Abandoned Vehicles, to include definitions thereof.
Councilmembers Schudmeyer?
Yes.
Hanna?
Yes.
Hoffman? Mayor Pro Tem Newton? Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to ordinance number 1010, First Reading, Specific Plan 18-1, Auto Mall Amendment 8, City of Norco, who has this? Steve King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is indeed a proposed amendment to the Auto Mall Specific Plan. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission on October 12th and they did recommend approval of this amendment. And basically, the impetus behind it is we do have a new car dealership that its corporation has a required design theme that they are requiring all of their existing dealerships to incorporate into their existing designs and it's also being required on new dealership buildings. It's pretty modern. The, has a lot of glass and a lot of composite aluminum panels. And it was not consistent with the adopted design theme of the Auto Mall Specific Plan, which was old California Spanish. If, if you look at the exhibit that was included in your staff report, it's pretty clear that the old California Spanish style went by the wayside some years ago in the Auto Mall. There really aren't that many buildings, well, most of the buildings don't have any or have only one or two elements of it, but it isn't, you don't, you don't drive into the Auto Mall thinking you're driving into Old Mexico or something. It just doesn't have that theme. So, but of the one that did is Hemborg Ford, or the one that did the most was Hemborg Ford. And it's that corporation that has this new design theme. So in order to be able for Hemborg Ford to comply with that requirement, we had to do an amendment to the specific plan to make an allowance for architecture that matches surrounding architecture and that allows for the incorporation of required corporate design themes when needed. And so there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that was removed. And then the Planning Commission recommended that what was removed be replaced by this statement. New car, new dealership development and major remodels of existing dealership buildings are subject to approval by the Planning Commission. Design features shall include conformity to the design features and themes of surrounding structures, including articulation, colors, and materials, and shall incorporate design themes as may be required by new car dealership corporate design standards. So that is what has been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Or who wants to start? Robin?
I just had a question with what you just read, Steve. It's very unspecific to me. So when a dealership goes to Planning Commission, what are they going to be looking for? Is it kind of going to be a free for all on them?
Well, as was pointed out by one of our commissioners, and we only have two right now, new car dealerships in the Auto Mall, and the likelihood of getting more, while we work and hope for it, it's probably not going to happen in the near future. So what the Planning Commission, this again would be a site-by-site analysis. And what, what the Planning Commission would look at is what surrounding architecture has been approved and developed at or with. And then if the corporate design comes into play, as it does with Hemborg Ford. I should note also that the corporate design image for, for dealerships is pretty much all modern, very sleek. You've probably seen them around in other communities where they just have the large glass windows for the showrooms. And then the rest of the building is clad in a composite aluminum coating, if you will. Very silver, very, very sleek looking. And Mr. Hemborg insisted with them to be able to keep some of the existing architecture on the building and has come up with a combination of prototype and keeping some of the existing architecture and materials. To his, to his credit, in so doing, he is sacrificing the funding package that Ford gives to its existing dealerships to do so. So he did recognize where he is and the cities that he's in and he wanted to keep and keep reflecting that, but he is required to do some of, to incorporate some of that new theme.
Okay, thank you.
Ted?
In reviewing this, Steve, you essentially eliminated the ARC from even any review prior to going to Planning Commission then?
No, we would still use them. What had originally been proposed is that the, these design changes be approved by the ARC and the Planning Commission changed that to be the full Planning Commission. So we would send the, actually, the ARC would not be involved. It would go directly to all of the Planning Commission. I apologize.
Okay, and that was what the Planning Commission?
Correct.
Wanted? Did they give a reason for that?
Just because of the impact of those businesses on the community and they are important to the community. And as the one commissioner indicated, this is probably the only one they're ever going to look at. So, because the Browning dealership is pretty much remodeled fairly recently and it doesn't reflect that early California style.
And my concern is that even though we're just changing this ordinance for one specific plan, I don't want this to snowball to other plans either. And personally, I kind of like the ARC before it goes to the Planning Commission in case some things have to be changed, rather than, and that's my personal thing, is that it prevents or allows changes that can be easily done, maybe not notice, but not set to the rigor of standard before it goes to planning if something needs to be changed. And that's why we have the ARC. Alright, thank you.
Greg?
Thank you, Kevin. Steve, a couple of concerns. That as, as we go north on Hamner from First Street, Second Street is Auto Mall Specific Plan. We go to Third Street, Fourth to Fifth, our architecture starts to change. Okay, all the way up to Sixth Street. And in the, in the future, with, with other projects coming forward, that we're somewhat, you know, kind of making an exception to what we have in our land use element on architectural styles for different commercial zones. So by allowing like this, this modern, sleeker architectural look, how, how does that work as a function of use? What, what supports that? Knowing that in our general plan land use element, it's a function of use. How does that, this new architectural style fit with that?
Well, then, one of the things we've talked about in the past in Architectural Review, and the issue keeps coming up every once in a while, but one of, one of the issues I remember that we were talking about in some of our community presentations a few years ago is that in, in the zoning code, it definitely states that the city is working toward incorporating the Western and Equestrian theme. However, it recognizes that theme is not as easily applicable to some buildings because of their uses or because of their size. And in reference to the new car dealerships, the, the size of the buildings don't really lend themselves to a Western and Equestrian theme, which is a more pedestrian oriented kind of thing. Because if you try to apply, it's hard to apply those features on such a grand scale and make it look, not look silly, I guess is the best way to put it. And then if you try to shrink it down so that there's a whole series of, it looks like a whole series of storefronts, it, it, you, nobody's fooled. It looks like just a bunch of fake applications applied to the side of the building. So it's, it's probably mostly a function of the size of these buildings. It's just a very hard design to incorporate into those because of it.
So more a function of size than?
In these, yeah.
Then, then use? Or use would still be in there, but it's all?
I think use is in there because I think, going back to the, how important these businesses are to our city. We do want to be, we want to be good neighbors with them. And if their corporations require them to do it and they're willing to meet us halfway, I think it's a good.
Okay, so if we, if we also consider that function of size, I guess my concern is, like I said, as we go further north, that we're still have consistency with it. And that it just doesn't go away if we have another big corporate entity come in and go, no, this is our corporate look, you know? Take it or leave it.
And there will be consistency because in the code, there, there is provision that if a, if you're not in a region or area that's strongly identified with Western and Equestrian, you can design to match your surrounding architecture. And that's, that's an attempt to make sure there's good transitions as you're going from one area, area of the city to another.
And I'm correcting this, or correct me if I'm not, that as you go north, we, we transition, or we're supposed to transition more into the Western architecture till we get to Sixth of Hamner and then down Sixth is?
Right.
Western, okay. Thank you, Steve.
Any cards on this?
No cards.
Open and close public hearing. Don't hear a motion on this? Motion to approve?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco approving Specific Plan 85-01, Amendment 8, to amend the Norco Auto Mall Specific Plan with any related cross-references and other chapters as needed to revise the architectural standards and procedures. Specific Plan 85-1, Amendment 8.
Councilmembers Schudmeyer?
Yes.
Hanna?
Yes.
Hoffman? Mayor Pro Tem Newton? Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to 6A, Appeal Hearing. This was pulled by Councilman Newton, Steve King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an appeal of an action that was taken by the Planning Commission for property at 5060 Pinto Place. It started with a code case for a structure that was built without permits. And it's, it's taken a long time to get to a point where a decision-making body could make its decision on this because there were a lot of other zoning, excuse me, code issues that needed to be cleaned up before we could take it to the Planning Commission for an action. But we did take it to the Planning Commission. It was a proposal for a 1,250 square foot storage building. It, it met all of the required standards for an accessory building, but it did require crossing of the open animal area, which is and has, continues to be an issue with the Planning Commission because they think that it, that requirement renders the lot, it takes it one step closer to not being an animal keeping lot. And they've been vigilant in looking at that requirement. Ultimately, the Planning Commission, it decided to deny the project without prejudice, which means that the applicant is waived from the one-year requirement that is required when a CUP is denied. You have one, you have to wait one year before you reapply for the same thing. A denial without prejudice means you don't have to wait one year. So they denied it without prejudice with the stipulation that by February, the owners come back with proof that the pad that they put the building on could support the building and that had to be by a certified engineer. The action of the Planning Commission was appealed by the City Council and then subsequent to that, the owners of the property did submit a letter indicating that they are going to, rather than pursue approval of it, they're going to remove it and have asked for time to remove it by, up to January 1 in order to remove the building. So the options, I guess, you could uphold the Planning Commission with a roll call vote or you could change the denial without prejudice to a denial and then that would be staff's recommendation with direction that code enforcement then start on the removal of the building and they'd be given time until January 1 to get that done. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Greg, would you like to?
Thank you. Well, based upon the, the new information that was given to us, that the property owner's asking to January 1 to be removed, I would concur with you that this should be addressed and watched by code enforcement that January 1, that building is, is taken down. I believe there's lessons to be learned here and maybe different processes that we, we look at with the Planning Commission. This building was built without any permits at all. No regard for life safety, no regard for animal keeping and obviously, no regard for adjoining properties from drainage to view sheds. So if this letter wasn't here tonight, my recommendation was going to be to deny and that the building would be removed. I did have some heartburn and I'm not slamming the Planning Commission because I understand where they were going with it by requiring a geotechnical engineer to do a subsurface investigation. And I believe our assistant city engineer was to go out and address the drainage after that meeting with the adjoining property owner. That, that's where I think I kind of had a problem with the planning, that maybe there was just too much latitude in the basis of we're going to give you six, we're going to deny the project, but we're going to give you six months to get a soils guy out there to tell you, eh, yeah, it works. to tell you, eh, yeah, it works or no, it doesn't. So it kind of drags it on, but the, since this code case, this whole thing's been going on for two years. And however we can work with that process, I think we can learn from this. If, if you want to build, I don't want to send the message that if you build without permits and you get caught, well, then we just slap your hand. I think as far as I'm concerned, like on this one, you built this with total disregard, you were aware of what the process is, tear it down, remove it from the site, and then go through the, the proper application and process. So I, I'm, I'm with you on what you're asking for is just a, would this be like a straight denial?
Yeah, this would be.
And then, and then we put something on with, with code enforcement that building's gone January 1.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
Ted?
Yeah, I'm going to concur with Greg on this, but what, also what I'd like to add, since this, except this thing's been going on for two years, and the applicant himself dragged most of this heartache on himself by not getting, and he was warned to get grading permits also. So not only would I like to see the building come down, I'd like to see it regraded back, the ground graded back to where its original condition, because that earth, there was a lot of earth moved in there that from what the letters that we have in our packet, the neighbors were not happy on. So he actually changed the whole drainage situation up there. And a lot of this could have been avoided if he had gotten proper permits in the first place, instead of probably coming up with substandard grading in building.
Would, would, would this have required a grading permit at the outset?
It's hard to say at this point, because it's hard to determine how, how much soil was moved to build the pad for the building. And the, so, well, Sam, whatever his title is, yeah, did go out and look, look at the site to see what, how drainage off the property was impacted, and he was satisfied that, well, because they did come in to file for a grading permit, and that's what took a lot of the time. And he was satisfied that the runoff issues were being addressed, so.
So you're saying we can't make him, because he had to have a grading permit?
No, I, my, actually, my concern was kind of the opposite of that, that if it hadn't required a grading permit in the first place, that we have a difficult time requiring a grading permit to put it back the way that he didn't need one in the first place. But that isn't the case.
Okay. Robin?
My concern is the same as Ted's, just making sure that the grading and drainage and the, like on the fence line, you can see where everything's coming down and putting pressure and stuff, just that that's addressed and taken care of as well. I mean, it's one thing to take down the building, and so if they take down the building, do they take out the concrete slab as well and all, all of that? Okay. So will it then be back to the original condition of the property to incorporate the return to grade?
As far as we can ascertain what the original condition was, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Burwin?
I agree with everyone else up here on this, that it should be removed. But I see that's a letter, they say they're going to take the building down. Now, are they going to take the slab up, or is the next guy going to use it for a skateboard park out there on the deal?
No, the slab will go too.
Because it's hard to, it'd be hard for me to buy a piece of property if I was going to have to remove a slab that was in the way. But looking at these pictures, that it's a lot higher now than the neighbor's property. So, and I don't know, I wish they'd have got pictures last Sunday and Monday when we were getting those hard rains to see what the runoff was on that particular deal because the fence, the board fence doesn't go all the way down to the bottom. Looks like it's got the rocks piled under there that you know good and well, water's going to erode all of that and cause the neighbor people to have a big drainage problem. Over there probably erode their property and just domino from that. So I, I agree with everybody else up here, it needs to come down, and they need to clean that, remove that slab and try to put the grading area back as close as they can get it without impacting the neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea to indicate that in your motion, but that would normally be what, if we have a situation where there's been illegal grading, the remedy is to fix it and put it back to the way it was originally, and that's all we're saying here.
But you go back through history, and you're old enough to know this, John. Some of the biggest wars in the country has been caused by neighbor's water coming over to other people's. I grew up in an area where there's irrigated farm water, and if you didn't keep your runoff water on your property, you was in a court getting sued. And I've seen that happen over here on the little side street off of Corona, where some guy back during the El Ninos, he built his property up, and everybody else was underwater after that, and they had some big battles over that. So, thank you.
As I look at this, I, I mean, I don't want to second guess Sam, but I'm going to second guess Sam. I mean, what I see here is a lot of rocks and stuff piled against a fence. And this fence looks to be, I don't know, how high is it? I mean, when I was over there, from her side, it was, what, about seven feet high, and I think code says it's six. I personally think that they need to remove all those rocks and all those things away from there, because I, I mean, how many, what constitutes a grading permit? How many, how many, how many square feet?
It's, if it was 50 cubic feet, cubic yards of dirt, it requires permit.
Yeah, I mean, as I look at this, you've got an entire fence line that is just piled high with stuff. I also have a little, just as a reminder, as I look at the minimum setbacks, five feet from rear and 10 feet from any structure, remember you have to look at that in view of 18.45. That is, you're quoting 18.12 and 18.13, which is for accessory buildings without permits, without CUPs. The maximum height, which is fine, but I want to remind everybody that 864 and, and, what is it, 14 feet? I can't remember all of a sudden, but that is the legal height, and above it is a CUP. What happens if they don't remove the concrete? So if they've moved, what happens? We pursue them, or we just leave the concrete there?
That's what, that's, that's one of, one of the reasons why we're going to have to make it clear in what you enact, that they have to bring it back to its natural state. And then if it looks like there really are an escrow going to move, then we'll record it. And sadly, the new property owner's going to get the benefit of it.
All right. And then as I read this letter, when I read things like lying about us and storing, well, I saw the equipment there. I saw it. And when we don't follow the municipal code, what happens is we start defaming one another and we start neighbor wars. So it's really, really important that people understand that from the get-go, in my opinion, these large buildings violate the intent and purposes of the municipal code. And when we don't follow the municipal code, people forget that the things they say up there are public record. So I, I will make a motion to, yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
I'd like to concur with the mayor on a couple of issues, and, and that's on the drainage, and I do take exception that we're looking at this as there really aren't any drainage issues, and there were extreme issues that impacted that neighbor, that, that site, that foundation, and the subgrade was entirely undocumented fill. There's absolutely no doubt about it, because you can see it when you look at the edge of the slab. So that, Kevin, I agree, is there, there is a drainage impact that somehow we got to make sure, or be very clear that, yes, they take down the building. We had this happen over Corona Avenue, that, the old Stangle Place. They were losing the home, they took down the building, but left the slab and everything else. So that one worked out okay, but this one, we got to make sure that the slab is taken out, whether it's the next owner, but also the undocumented fill. Otherwise, the neighbors are going to have issues until it happens. So, John, I mean, however you would record that in our motion?
No, you need to, you include that in your mo, all those things you just said in the motion, and we'll see how the progress is. But if it doesn't look like there's progress, we'll record a notice of abatement action, and it'll be of record for the, when he tries to sell a house or a potential new owner. I'm assuming, the one thing that I don't know from the staff report we haven't talked about, is that he is in fact the owner as opposed to a tenant who's just moving away.
Would it be possible to file that abatement notice sooner, like now, instead of later?
Well, now, that's what I meant by to see how it's going. I mean, if it looks like he's out there day after tomorrow working, probably isn't quite so necessary.
Now, I guarantee you, he's going to disassemble that building, load it up on a truck, and we're gone, and I'm not removing that slab, you're daydreaming.
Yeah. And if, well, I mean, the question, which I don't have an answer to, maybe Steve does, is whether or not he's in fact the property owner is, okay.
It's concerning because underneath that slab, it essentially looks like what it looks like along the fence.
Absolutely.
I mean, there's no, been no effort to make it safe. So do you want to make a motion, Greg?
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, I have cards on this item.
Let's open a public hearing unless somebody has another comment. Let's hear it.
Bob Long?
Good morning, Mr. Long.
For giving me the opportunity to speak with you, I'm not a public speaker, so please bear with me. I'm the neighbor. I live directly to the south of this building. And I can tell you, as far as water drainage over the last rainfall we had, it was pretty significant. In my place, did better than it ever has. I had absolutely no water issues. Usually my barn floods, not this time. So we'll put that aside for now. City living in a rural atmosphere. I know rural people. When I was in eighth grade, I drove my little brother to school, 20 miles across Perry in western Nebraska, to a one-room schoolhouse. Total student body, eight kindergarten through eighth grade. I know rural. And there's not a real ranch or farm in America. And I've traveled this country big time, through the Air Force, I was a deputy sheriff in Cheyenne, Wyoming for several years. I grew up on some of the biggest cattle ranches in the nation. I know what rural is. And you're not going to find one of them that does not have at least one, if not 20 of those buildings. So we pride ourselves on being a city in a rural atmosphere. I moved here for that reason, and I'm pretty damn sure I'm not the only one. I'm relatively certain that most of us live in the city of Norco, which by the way, is known across this country. I've had numerous times where people have asked me, where are you from? I tell them, I'm from Riverside area, you know, south or east of LA, Riverside area, you know, a little town called Norco. Oh, yeah, we know that, that's the horse town, right? This city is known across this nation for that very reason. Most of us, in order to make a living, we had to come to this concrete jungle. Most of us moved to Norco for one reason and one reason only, the freedom to do what we wanted to do with our property. Simple as that. You can't do that in Anaheim. You can't build your own barn in your backyard like I did in Anaheim, or Orange, or Sammer, you know, I don't care, you name it, you can't do it. They're not going to let you. And that's why we're here, for the freedom of a rural community. Because we grew up, most of us, around horses and cattle and pigs. That's why I'm here. This is the United States of America. Constitution used to mean something. That little phrase about being freedom to do what you want within your home and your property means something to me. My grandson is a wolf in the scout troop that did the posting of the flag tonight. That flag means something to me. I'm retired Air Force, and I'm retired deputy sheriff. I look at it like this, because I was there day one. You want to know what's under that slab? I'll tell you, I was standing right there when it was poured. And I've been near many, watched many of them done, because that's something that interests me, and I want to build another building in my backyard as well. And I'll tell you, that slab is done right. If anybody is affected by the drainage of that building, it's mine. Nobody's come ask me what I thought. Not one person has come to my house and said, hey, what do you think about this? Is this bothering you?
I, I have to apologize, we have three minutes, and to be fair to everybody, but maybe wrap it up.
Okay. Well, that's how I feel. I think my, my one final point is, you're right, he should have known, in fact, he did know, better. Find the crap out of him, and he's going to get permits. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
66, good timing, though. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Well, I want to just encourage you to follow what your Planning Commission comes up with. If they deny, I think they, they have done their due diligence. They may have squirreled it up a little bit, but they do their due diligence. And you wouldn't be getting all these denials requests if, if you wouldn't keep overturning the Planning Commission. And yes, this is a wonderful town where you can do pretty much what you want on your own property. But obviously, we all have to comply with building permits. I have a barn, I have an outdoor kitchen, everything on our property. We've come to City Hall and gotten our building permits and haven't tried to do it without those proper permits. That's necessary for safety and drainage. I also live on a, in a flood plain on Corona Avenue. And fortunately, our 10 or 12 neighbors have kept the drainage open. Anytime anybody brought in a load of DG for their corrals, they made sure that it was drained off, and, and we watched out for each other. But I want to encourage you to pay attention to those people that you've put on that Planning Commission and all the commissions. They, they are, I think they're doing their job. And so many denials come to before City Council, and I think if you quit overturning them, they quit showing up. And I encourage you just to go along with the Planning Commission, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Pat.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor.
Hi, Marcia, how are you?
I'm, okay. And with Steve's information, that's news to me, so it just blew my whole speech. I am the neighbor on the south side of the Duarte property. With the rain, I, I submitted pictures to you. You can see that there absolutely is drainage. As far as, do you want to see pictures before he started all of this? I have that also, because our properties were level with just a chain link fence going down the middle of them, or separating the two of them. He graded down about three feet at the far back of his property and pulled it all forward to the center part of his property. So he's three or four feet lower than me in the back and three or four feet higher than me along that fence line that you see those pictures. Drainage, Sam, and I don't know his last name, he was at the last meeting, he said there was absolutely no drainage problem. There was a drainage problem last winter, and there was a drainage problem last Monday when it rained. I submitted pictures, you can see the water running down, it floods that corner of my arena. All of that dirt and concrete and wood and metal that he scraped up towards my fence is now coming down. You can see in one picture that the fence is now bowing because of all of stuff coming down onto it. My request now, if he's going to take the building down, the slab down, my only request is, please, please, make him regrade that so that I don't have the drainage problem. I didn't have it before they moved in and graded, and I don't want it anymore. Because like I say, it's, it floods that corner of my arena and has eroded a low spot in it. So that's my only request that you absolutely, if you could, get him to regrade it to what it was prior to. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
That concludes comments.
Bring you back to council. I kind of want to address a couple of things. In 2010, we had a gymnasium that was built in the hills. And for almost a year, what we did was we went out, we tried to figure out, how do we allow people to park motorhomes, things like that? And we went out, we measured motorhomes. Because the problem was, is that the rights of the neighbors were the ones being infringed upon. Literally gigantic buildings were being built. So we came upon 14 feet high, 864 feet, which is the size you would do for a motorhome. Because the problem we had is that these buildings aren't allowed anywhere else because they tend not to, they don't belong in neighborhoods, according to other cities. Now, I understand that people want to do that, and we tried to accommodate. And then the extra footage was just in case there was sort of a, an extra couple feet that was needed or something like that. And then each one had to be case by case. If you were on six acres, you could probably put up a gigantic building, nobody knows there. But if you put it on a smaller property, which is one very near my house, five feet from the fence, totally complies with 1812 and 1813, problem is, they can't sell the house because it's a gigantic billboard. So we came up with that, and it was a 4-0 vote, it was a charter issue, and all of a sudden, we began to encounter all of these large buildings. Our municipal code is very clear. We've been fighting since 1948 to make Norco Norco. I've been there since 1961, and we fought county zoning, we fought state zoning, and we fought internal zoning for people who wanted to make money on smaller lot development. And we fought. There's a lot of blood in this town for people that stood up for, we are a sea of green in a sea of concrete. We're the last city in the state of California, by law, you build on a half acre or more. That took courage and guts to do it. And so now we're faced with a situation where suddenly, the rights got flipped. And the rights, the CUP, was to protect the neighbor who has a right to expect a certain zoning in their community. And when you don't follow the municipal code, what happens is you have neighbor wars, you have all these terrible things that begin to happen. And so in this case, for me, it's an easy one. Maybe it was built perfectly. I don't know. But the truth of the matter is, as you state, he knew he was supposed to pull out a permit. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. If somebody wants to change the municipal code, then get four people up here and change 18.45, but don't reinterpret it, don't act like it's not there. And I totally agree with that. I think that what we will do, as soon as the group comes back with their recommendation, the ad hoc committee, I believe we need to sit down with planning, we need to sit down with the city council, and I think we need to sit there together and everybody get on the same page. Because when I called them, a couple of them had trouble knowing what a CUP was. So I'm concerned about that. So with that, unless there's some other comments, I'm prepared to make a recommendation that will include the stuff along the fence, the slab, and regrading that so it's back to flat. Anybody have other comments? So my motion will be, he must remove the building by... Greg, did you want to remove the building sooner, or is January 1st okay with you?
The, excuse me, the applicant's request, the property owner's request is January, that the building would be gone by January 1st? I'm fine with that.
So January 1st, he would remove the building, the slab, and he would regrade the property to the level that it was prior to him building illegally?
Yeah, and we should clarify that, I guess, upholding the planning commission's denial, that we support denial of the project, but also what the city attorney mentioned about abatement of the slab and any documented fill.
I'll file the notice of abatement action.
Okay. All right. That's your motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right.
Mayor can share a read of back so we understand.
Absolutely.
The motion made by Mayor Bash is to, including the comments by Mayor Tim Newton, is to uphold the planning commission denial, to require the owner to remove the building, the accessory building, by January 1, 2017, remove the concrete slab, and to regrade the property to the original level prior to the installation of the building. And that the city attorney will be filing a notice of abatement. Is that clear, or are there any amendments to that?
Is there a date on the regrading? Did we, because he said January...
January 1st.
Oh, did he? Okay.
2017.
Is that clear? Okay. Councilmember Gudmeyer. Councilmember Hannah. Councilmember Hoffman. Mayor Pro Tim Newton. Mayor Bash.
Yes, moving on to City Council, City Manager, Staff, Communications. Berwin?
No.
Ted? Greg? I have one, and I'm hoping, I would like to put this on the agenda. I think I was talking to Andy today, and we might find a way to fund it. And I'm going to need Berwin's input on this. I would like to look at the pole barns and see if we can, I don't think we can rebuild them, but I think that we can, they're so utilized, and I think they would be more utilized. And I would like to see about either tearing them down and putting up new ones, or, and doing it in the rustic manner. But I think that, where does that fall in the plan for Ingles Park? It's part of it, right? The master plan?
Well, on the last master plan we had about six years ago, it was to remove them. But there's ways, and I'm sure Brian looked into this, and Newton being a construction guy there, that I don't think, I think they can be reinforced, I think those poles can be replaced without removing the whole unit. I think you can do it, there's companies that can do it one at a time. Because I know down in the Midwest, they do it all the time, they replace poles, support beams, and stuff like that without tearing the building down. And I'm sure there's construction company, isn't that right, Greg? There's people that can do that?
Well, you know what? I'd like to agendize it so we can talk about it, what we want to do. Because I really like, I think they're important, I think we utilize them.
Where's that be?
And let's just, I'd like to agendize it and talk about them.
Mr. Mayor, if you recall, I think I asked for a meeting of the Ingles Park Master Plan Committee for the beginning of 2017, so that, and that would be part of the discussion.
So in January, maybe at least get a report and discuss it, Brian? Does that work for you?
Yeah, what I would say is, is the committee and staff can bring a report back to council with what it's looked at and what its recommendation would be.
Okay, that's good.
That would be perfect timing as we go into the CIP and the budget for fiscal, next fiscal year.
Great, all right. Then I guess I don't need a motion, so...
Don't need a motion?
Don't need a motion. So, staff, anything?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I have a brief presentation that should just take about five minutes to go over. Basically, this is just informational for you to understand. Based on the recategorization of some felony crimes into misdemeanors, we've run into a number of cases where the expectations of people being arrested, that they can be released in the field through the site release process. In some cases, that is true, in some cases, that is not. So what I would like to talk to you is about a plan that we have in effect, and we're actually looking at having this implemented in two weeks. And basically, it's to facilitate a booking process for misdemeanor crimes through the Norco substation we have here on site. So misdemeanor crimes are basically, we have two ways of handling those. We can do what's called a site release in the field, where we issue the suspect or the defendant a citation with a promise to appear in court. However, there are problems with that that relate to a true identification of the suspect being limited on what we can do with the investigation on scene, and some other factors that all have a role to play in the site release process. The other alternative is, we take them to downtown Riverside and book them into jail on a misdemeanor crime. Now, the field release process, basically, like I said, it can be done with, if we have valid identification, as long as it's non-domestic violence related or a court-related issue, we can basically field release. But again, we don't get as thorough as an investigation, and we like to be obviously as thorough as we can. So booking process at a custodial facility, some misdemeanor crimes, as I explained, do require a jail booking. One of those would be someone that's intoxicated, and we cannot change that, they still are required to be booked at a custodial facility. We're not equipped to handle that here locally. But basically, other crimes that require a custodial booking, basically, a deputy has to leave Norco and transport the defendant or the suspect to the Robert Presley Detention Center, that's the closest facility we have. That's 17 miles one way. So you have the one, the transport there and then the transport back. And depending on how busy the jail is, that booking time can take anywhere from an hour to two, possibly even three hours before we see that deputy return to service. So what we're looking at doing is, we've worked with our CAL ID, our Technical Services Bureau, we're going to be able to facilitate a booking station within our office for the misdemeanor crimes that we would typically do a site release for in the field. And what this means is, we're going to be able to photograph them, fingerprint them, and submit them through the CAL ID live scan process. So we get all their criminal history there through their fingerprinting, and basically, they are actually assigned a booking number. They are considered a booked inmate into our custodial facility, but there is no fee assigned to the contract city. Ultimately, they would be released out of our substation, but they have to go through all of these processes. It means we get a better and true identification of the person that we're arresting. So if they don't have ID, or if they have questionable identification, this is a way we vet the process and make sure we have someone who is saying who they are, if not, then we find out who they actually are. Again, the booking station advantages, a deputy books misdemeanor crimes in Norco Sheriff's Office. For those that he can book through here, he does not have, or he or she does not have to leave the city, which means they're in service longer, they're available to the citizens, and the process provides for more thorough investigations, like explained through the fingerprinting and the vetting process of their criminal history. And this is best we find for our drug arrest. And that is important because in the past, before the law changed, it was a felony to possess narcotics and controlled substances. Well, as it stands now, some of those have been reduced to misdemeanors. So this also holds people accountable for breaking the law. So the required equipment is a live scan machine, there is one here in the city, we are going to be moving that from the office, the front office, into the sheriff's side and into our substation. There is some electrical work required, we're working on that now, but we've been quoted at $1,500 for that to take place. We're going to cover that out of our existing budget, and the photographic equipment will be provided by CAL ID. So basically, in a nutshell, we will be booking misdemeanor crimes in a much more thorough and vetting the criminal history, making sure we have who they say they are. It provides us a better opportunity of providing a better service. Any questions?
Ted?
Eric, I appreciate you doing the economic way of doing that. Isn't that going to require a CSO with Title 15 training? Because you're actually, even though you're booking them here, that, I will just say for lack, that that inmate or that person in custody is still going to have to be babysat while they're here in our custody, in our facility. And do we have a CSO that is there, or do we have to have a deputy sit there and babysit them?
We do have a CSO, but this work will primarily be done by the deputy handling the case. We're not going to hold anyone here. They're just going to go through this process, this identification, the paperwork, everything that's required for the misdemeanor, basically, the arrest paperwork to be completed, is done by the deputy as they're processing this person. And once that's done, they're sent out the door with their summons.
Okay, but that, the live scan isn't automatic. It does take time to process and come back.
That is true. We also have Identix, which is a quicker way of sending the fingerprints through and getting results back quicker. And that's actually used in the field because it's a faster technology.
And those I understand. But I'm worried about the in-progress call of the deputy, and now you've got, he can't leave because he has somebody he's waiting on and finishing on. And that's what I'm asking, is it, do we need to get our CSOs with that Title 15 training involved?
Our CSOs are trained to handle the live scan process. The problem is, is I don't know if they're always going to be available. These bookings can take place at night. We only, we have two CSOs, and they work split sides of the week, and they don't cover 24 hours. So we will not always have a CSO here. But this, as opposed to transporting someone down to the jail, is a better alternative because there's less time involved and the deputy can get out in the field quicker.
Okay. And my suggestion might be, and Andy will probably shoot me for it, is can you look at your mid-range budget to see what it would cost us to have a CSO on there to fulfill that time so that the sworn deputy has the ability to leave the station if a need arises to where then they don't have to sit there and babysit, and in custody as you go through the process, so they can actually do that?
Yes, and we actually talked about this during our strategic planning, looking at an additional CSO. But yes, we can have that conversation.
Okay, I just want you to look at that and, because you and I have been there in the same situation where you're stuck and you can't leave because you have a 1015 incident.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's exactly what I don't want to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So this would be primarily minor drug arrests, would it be intoxicated? Intoxicated?
No. That would be one of the exceptions where we do have to transport them to the jail because they have to have time to sober. And we're not set up with a sobering cell or for that constant monitoring to take place.
Even though we built that nice little custom restroom for them?
There's some very, very specific guidelines that have to be followed. The correctional, State Department of Corrections has issued through Title 15, Title 24, where each of those steps have to be continually monitored because they're intoxicated and has to do with their safety. And there will be.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Robin, anything?
Just thank you for thinking outside the box and looking at different ways where we can use what resources we already have to provide better service. So thank you.
Thank you.
Berwin?
I think that's a good idea. We're finally going to get to use a lot of that building that we spent all that money on a few years ago back there. They gave us a snow job on that deal, but you're using it, thank you.
And we are very, very grateful for that space, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, but you're using it. They kind of snowed us on that.
Yeah, you're like supposed to pay for it. Anybody else from staff?
Real quick, I just wanted to inform council that our project, that hopefully you're enjoying on Hammer and Towne Scout for the street repaving is finished. And so we'll be finalizing that and bringing a notice of completion in the next month. But it turned out very well, the contractor was very good to deal with and work with, and we had no major hiccups, so it was a very pleasant project to have constructed, so...
Lots of compliments. Anybody else? This meeting is now adjourned.